Welcome. Good evening. Welcome to the Adelanto Elementary School Regular Board Meeting. Today is Tuesday, February the 21st, 2023. Ms. Levine, may I get a roll call, please? Trustee Benz?
Present.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, present.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, present.
Trustee La French? La French, present. 1.04, Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, Madam President, this evening we would like to call up Lieutenant Colonel Kenneth Cook-Askins, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and later on he will have a presentation on the California Kid at Court Program.
Everyone, please stand. I'm sorry, the time is now 5:30. Thank you.
Please place your right hand over your heart. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
I love the sound of the children saying the pledge. Section two, adoption of the agenda. Mrs. Levine, are there any proposed additions, deletions, and adjustments in the order of business?
Yes, Madam President, for public comment period for open session items only, we are moving that up so that we can have the children participate this evening. And so that'll be a vote on its own for just that particular item.
Okay, thank you. Adoption of the agenda. Trustees, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Trustee Turner, motion to adopt the agenda with the proposed adjustments.
Can I have a second, please?
Benz, I set second.
Ms. Levine, please call for the vote. Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee La French? La French, aye. We will now have a public comment. Can I get a motion for a public comment now?
Trustee Turner, motion.
Can I get a second, please?
Benz, I set second.
Ms. Levine, can you call for the vote, please? Trustee Webster?
Webster, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee La French? Aye.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This time we'd like to call Ms. Kristen Cooper, Principal of Morgan Kincaid Preparatory, up to the podium, please.
Good evening, President La French, trustees and Cabinet. Thank you for allowing us to share with you today some of the fabulous happenings that were in Kincaid. A big thank you to our teachers and parents and students who made it out there today and their flexibility. So last week, we were able to have a Black History Month Assembly. Trustee Turner was able to join us. Thank you for coming and joining us. And several of our classes performed. They shared quotes, achievements, songs and dances. And we just have a little snippet of that to share with you tonight. We'll have Ms. Tighe and Ms. Hudson's classes performing, and they'll do their own introduction to explain their performance. And they'll be followed by Ms. Gross's class, who will also be performing a combination of first, second, and then fourth graders tonight.
Thank you so much for joining us. We are going to have a couple of our students here share with you our presentation.
Louis Armstrong was a famous trumpeter band leader and singer. He lived from August 4th, 1901 until July 6th, 1971. He was the first African-American jazz musician to write an autobiography titled "Swing That Music." He was the first African-American to be featured in a major Hollywood movie called "Pennies From Heaven." He was also the first African-American entertainer to host a nationally-sponsored radio show. He was most famous for the music where he used stirring rhythms with singing phrases and incredible high notes. The song we are going to perform is "What a Wonderful World." It was performed in 1967 by Louis Armstrong. Stepping is a type of dance that is practiced amongst people of all ages, from drill teams, churches, high schools, to college clubs and more. In step, the body is used to make sounds through clapping, stomping and spoken word. Modern day stepping also use elements of tap dancing, breakdancing, gymnastics and Afro-Caribbean dance. Stepping has had a long tradition in Africa and black communities. While its origin are in the black community, stepping has spread into Latina, Asian cultures and many others. The start of stepping dates back to Africa.
Whoever speaks first, it doesn't matter. Just make sure that you're in here, okay?
One day, this nation will rise up in love with that true meaning of its creed. Behold the truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal. That what? The former state will be able to represent the nation. Our children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character.
Thank you, Morgan. Would any? Would any trustee like to make a comment?
First, I guess. First thing, it takes a lot of brave bravery kids to come out in a full house. They all came to see you. So you have got a big, big, big crowd here just for you. So, and I want to thank, thank you for being so brave and seeing, singing and speaking in front of us. It's greatly appreciated. Teachers, I want to thank, thank you because that is, wow, that was great. They did so well. They really, really did. And, and it is greatly appreciated. Thank, thank you.
Trustee Webster?
Good evening, all. Thank you, Morgan Kincaid, for being here and Ms. Cooper for having all of our kiddos join us tonight. I want to say thank you to our parents who are here in support of our kiddos. We could not do it without you. And I look forward to more presentations in the future.
Trustee Turner?
I have to concur with my fellow trustees. I did attend a Black History Celebration at Morgan Kincaid, and it was amazing. The children did a phenomenal job, just as they did tonight. And thank you. Thank you, guys. You did an awesome job. And the older children in the back, and again, teachers and parents, thank you for all you do. It's always wonderful to see our cultures explained and celebrated, you know, Black History Month, Hispanic History Month, you know, Asian history, culture, and so continue to outstanding work. You did a phenomenal job. Thank you.
Seems like I can't talk without my glasses on, but I went over and tried to join the children over there because I wanted to be in their performance, but they told me no. I promised I could sing. I don't know if I could have gotten the steps, but they did a phenomenal job. But I tried to get on with them and they were, they were okay. They didn't need an extra backup singer. Thank you. I told them Morgan Kincaid was a special school in my heart, and they did a phenomenal job. Thank you to the teachers, principal. Thank you, everyone. It was nice to hear them say the pledge. It's nice to hear little voices, you know, here at the, at the district office. Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to close public comments. And we'll reopen at the regular time. Okay, we'll move on to three, closed session declaration. We'll be taking items 3.02 through 3.03 into closed session. Number four, public testimony before closed session. I'd like to read public testimony before closed session. "The public comment period is administered by the state law and is the point in the meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. Any person who wishes to address the governing board on closed session agenda items only must complete and submit an AESD speaker request form five minutes before the meeting is called to order. Public comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of these items. The board values public comments, and although the board of trustees cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, the board of trustees listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Additionally, a public speaker can be cut off for exceeding the allotted time or for willfully causing any actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting a person off or removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. If you were cut off or warned last time, please consider that your warning. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each closed session agenda item. The board limits the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentations depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional persons speak only if they have something new to add." Mr. Kraus, do we have any speakers?
Yes, Madam President, for ADTA this evening we'd like to call Mr. Robert Zubia to the podium.
Okay, good evening, board members. I'd like to start off by saying I am very grateful for and appreciate my career. It's what I get up for every day at 5:00 AM. I strive to serve the students and community in a highly excellent manner on a daily basis, but indeed, this is not always an easy task. Recently, I had a conversation with a retired physician. He told me about some of the challenges he faced over the course of his career, and I reciprocated with some of mine. At the end of our conversation, he extended his hand, and he said, "Sir, I salute you. I can't do what you do." And of course, I respectfully reciprocated. The point is, what we do as teachers is highly challenging and demanding. Aside from teaching, we parent our students on various levels. We manage and help correct a high level of inappropriate behavior. We plan lessons, grade papers, attend trainings, have parent conferences, among several other objectives which make this career a great deal more than a regular nine-to-five job. I'd like to switch gears now and talk about some of my experiences as a fourth grade teacher. I held this position for four years. While doing so, I experienced that fourth grade teachers and above have no true limit on how many students can be on their roster. And I find it a shame how the board refuses to compromise with upper grade teachers who have a roster of more than 30 students. I hold this belief because I question whether some or any of the board members have ever taken on this responsibility themselves. If that is the case, how can they possibly put a fair wage or salary on a task they have not personally done? Another factor involved with having a high amount of students is that not all school sites are equal. Some sites are more difficult to teach at than others. And to teach a class with more than 30 students in an area where tardiness and high absenteeism are evident or where education is not sufficiently supported outside of school is incredibly unfair to those teachers. It's unfair because they have to work themselves to the bone as they attempt to meet the needs of each of their students. Also, this scenario is not beneficial for those students as well because they are not receiving the attention and support they require to be fully prepared for the next grade level. And the reason why upper grade teachers are forced to do this is most likely for the purpose of saving the district money. I believe the same holds true for combo classes. Teachers in that, in that position, work themselves twice as hard, teaching two grade levels with the sole purpose of, again, saving the district even more money. From a board member's perspective, it must be great to tell teachers, "Work harder than I am willing to work and do it for far less money than I would ever be willing to accept." When high student ratios are examined from this angle, it appears to be incredibly selfish and unfair. In summary, we, the teachers, deal with a tremendous amount of responsibility. But we continue picking ourselves up and moving forward. We do this for our students and because we are professionals, which is why I believe we deserve what we are asking for. The mere 5% which has been proposed simply is not going to cut it. We are the champions of the district who go out there daily and get things done, which is why we deserve the 18% increase we are proposing. It's fair, and it's about time. Thank you very much, and I wish you a good evening.
Good evening. Certified staff and all that knew her. My prayer is having a job fair. We certainly do need our vacant positions filled, and we need substitutes for classified and certified staff. I would like to thank admin for allowing our paras to attend CSCA's paraprofessional conference. We have 11 paras from different schools attending. That's all I have for now. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak.
Next, Madam President, we'd like to call Generator to the podium.
Good evening, and thank you, trustees. Thank you. Welcome. Good evening, Cabinet Board. Really glad to see you tonight. I know you believe that all children can learn. Trustee Turner especially, we talked about this. That is 100% true. Despite our recent struggles and challenges, our students have the capability to learn. Adult students, in order to do so, need highly qualified teachers and more services. It is also important to remember that while all kids can learn, they have to want to. We are fighting against apathy from the kids and oftentimes anger from them due to whatever life situations they are currently facing and unmet needs they have. Each of our schools needs a full-time counselor because behaviors have always had an under behaviors always have an underlying reason. Instead, our counselors are pinch hitting for teachers as substitutes. We currently have four to five times more reserves than the state requires. Why are we holding on to that money? We are a school district, not a bank. The students that have generated ADA each year should be the beneficiaries of that money. There is ongoing money to pay highly qualified teachers. There is ongoing money to hire counselors. Our job is to educate the students in our community, our children who deserve better than what you're giving them. As long as you keep doing what you are doing, you will keep getting what you are getting. We need to do something different, something greater, something that shows this community that you care and value the students enough to give them smaller class sizes, highly qualified teachers to teach them, arts and music programs all year long, counselors at every campus, and we have to be better than our neighbors. Our population is full of homeless or foster youth, English language learners and students living in poverty. They need to come to schools as a safe zone, not a war zone. They have needs that we need to meet, and we are not getting that job done. From the bottom up, Maslow's needs are physiological, safety, love and belonging, esteem, and finally, self-actualization. Maslow's first needs for physiological needs and safety- Maslow's first needs for physiological needs and safety are not being met, not for our students and not for our teachers. I've said this before, and I know you say you hear me, but are you listening? Are you comprehending? Our students deserve better.
Thank you.
Madam President, we'd like to call Mary Jane Mulligan to the podium, please.
Good evening. My name is Mary Jane Mulligan, and I have taught in Adelanto for twenty-six years. Long ago, my mentor and very dear friend, Mrs. Lillian Walker, who served this community for over thirty years, said, "Don't leave here. These children deserve good teachers." The constant problem we have here is our school boards who never believe we deserve the fair compensation that the state sends you to pay our salaries and educate our children. Year after year, you create an adversarial situation between our staff and yourselves. You forget you were elected to serve this community, not to rule with an almighty hand and bank the money. You offer poor contracts and want much more work from teachers. We are not magicians. We work hard to educate our students, but you don't help. There are many children far behind in reading skills and behavior than the grade they are in. This is extremely unfair to the student who is well-behaved and at grade level. It is time to open the bank and provide extra resources to our students in need. Students need smaller class sizes and paraprofessionals in the classroom. Reading is the most important skill for a student. Why do your actions show little concern for our students? We have classes without regular teachers, no subs when teachers are absent, so classes need to be split. Will you offer a competitive salary and attract and retain teachers? And all young teachers, you should leave our district before you have too many years of service. It is sad to turn your back on our students, but the board is forcing your hands. My retired neighbors received social security increase of eight-point-seven percent in COLA without having to ask. A colleague's father is in a care facility, and the facility has told him as of April 1st there will be a twelve percent inflation increase. All around, as prices continue to increase, and still you don't offer the money the state has given to operate our district. Think about it. Is your goal to run everyone away from Adelanto? Are you going to honor your oath to serve this community and its children?
Thank you.
Madam President, we'd like to call Mr. Scott Garrett to the podium, please.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity. I want to echo what's been said. All we want is to be paid what everyone else has paid. If you want to cut through all the, well, let's get to where we can be competitive with the other districts. I have people that may disagree with me, but we want, you're not offering, you're not bringing us up to where you go to the neighboring districts. We're not there, and we don't know why. And if you want to, you know, you need to explain to us why we're not there or why we don't deserve it. That's what, you know, that's what you guys need to do because we're below other districts, and we don't know why. We have a challenging clientele, and we need all the help we can get. We need aides in our classroom. If you can't cut the class size, we need aides in our classroom. We need both. But we need aides in the classroom. I've got kids, I've got fifth graders that can't read as well as some of these youngsters that were up here, and I've got to deal with them every day. They need attention. I can't, I try, but I can't. I've got thirty-one kids, thirty-one kids in my class. I started with thirty-four, I have thirty-one. It's still a lot. I've got kids that need attention every day. I can only do my best. And so, class size, aides, buses, try paying your bus drivers more money. You might, really, you might. Yeah. I want to share with you, there was a farming operation in Oxnard that had a labor shortage. They erased their labor shortage. At the time, twelve dollars an hour was the wage. They went to fifteen. It was gone. So you guys, if you pay more, pay above if you have to. You'll get bus drivers, and then the kids will get to school. We've got kids that don't come to school because there's no buses. Class size, and that's it. Just, we just want to be treated fairly. That's what we want. We want to be treated fairly, and you're not treating us fairly, and you need to either tell us why or why you can't. Thank you.
Madam President, we'd like to call Ms. Lisa Martinelli to the podium.
Good evening, board, cabinet, parents, teachers, and paraprofessionals and other community members. Thank you so much for coming. Thank you, students, for the wonderful performance. If you don't know, I've been teaching in this community for about thirty years and, or close to it, twenty-eight years. So, and I've been a teacher for over thirty. And I just wanted to clarify a few things that have been going on that may be part of the reason why you cannot retain your teachers. Every single year that we do negotiations just about, we are told that we are receiving comparable pay to the other school districts. Unfortunately, what happens is that they're comparing this, us, to what the other districts are getting at that time. But then, those districts in their negotiations receive their salary increases, yet we've already received a salary increase that just puts us where they were before theirs. So, every year, we end up behind. So who's going to want to teach in a district that has such needy students with little support? Secondly, we, when we were in negotiations, we were given an, kind of a task to change the format of our, of our proposal. And we were supposed to be, treat each other fairly in this proposal. But what happened was, in one of the interchanges, back and forth, the proposal came back, and we were asked to change the heading. But we, trusting the other, the other side, did not check to see that part of our proposal was erased. So I think that that deserves some consideration. In addition, you have a four percent, actually, less than four percent, but to make it comfortable, you have a four percent required reserve every year for the past twenty, except for maybe a couple now because, thank you, Kraus, that you have said we are not deficit spending. But every year, we're told doom and gloom that we're deficit, deficit spending, and we just can't afford to pay teachers. But the fact is, is that your ending balances were never below ten percent. In addition to that, ed code requires that you pay teachers sixty percent. You're at forty-four percent. So we're six-point-seven million dollars. The money is there. You've been given more. You talk about, well, you know, these are, these are restricted funds. I'm not talking restricted funds. I'm not even including them.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam President, we'd like to call Ms. Viola Guzman to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. Superintendent Kraus, esteemed board members, guests, parents, and our ever-resilient, wonderful teachers. On behalf of parents, grandparents, and guardians of our precious students, thank you for allowing our voices to be heard in support of our teachers. My name is Viola Guzman. I'm a retired twenty-five-year-old instruction role assistant of the Mountain View School District in Almani, assisting in grades four, five, and six, eventually assisting in special ed. I'm going to try to be brief, and it's come to our attention as parents that our teachers are earning significantly less than their counterparts in the surrounding district. Our research has shown that to be true, and we would like to know why. We are here to let our teachers know they are not alone on their endeavor to eventually, sooner than later, receive a competitive salary, reduce class size, and enough support staff. In our research, we have also learned that good credential teachers are leaving at an alarming pace. After a short period in our district, we would like to know why. In our research, we have also learned that the district is lacking twenty-four qualified credential teachers. That's twenty-four classrooms. Why is this happening? Also, in our research, we have learned that our district consistently is losing counselors, bus drivers, and classroom aides. Again, why? Do our teachers not deserve to be paid a decent wage for taking our precious children, molding their young minds in the midst of taking in half of another classroom, making that classroom a one-to-thirty or thirty-five ratio because there are no substitutes who will teach in our district? And when they are not taking in ten to fifteen extra students, they are implementing the curriculum to students who learn at different paces, those who adapt immediately, those who take some time to adapt, the English learners who will eventually adapt, the children who are painfully struggling, and the children who number anywhere from one to three who consistently disrupt classroom instruction with no respect for authority. Every group of students I mentioned deserves a loving, dedicated teacher, which, for the present, they are privileged to have. These teachers who have not deserted our children, those who are still here, but I fear not for long. Without enough support staff, such as classroom aides, who are valuable assets, who can work with these struggling students by reinforcing the teacher's directed lesson, therefore helping the students with that needed boost they may be lacking at home due to a myriad of circumstances while doing their homework. Without enough counselors, psychologists, resource specialists, and self-contained teachers to address special needs students, our teachers, I fear, will leave or be recruited by districts who are prepared for the needs of every student and, most importantly, show a much-deserved respect by compensating them with a decent salary. Bus drivers are leaving. When a parent works down the hill and the bus does not show up.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Your time is up.
Sorry.
Madam President, we'd like to call Mr. Michael Calhoun to the podium, please.
I want to say thank you to all you teachers. I am a parent of a special needs student, and I've been denied service over and over. The lack of teachers, the lack of counseling, the fact that you have a man, men, on your board that I've witnessed on multiple times be told, "No, I'm a business owner. I own three businesses. None of my employees would ever tell me no," without losing their job. How can your students respect your teachers when your teachers do not respect you? This man can't assert his, his authority at all. And when I, last time I came to this board meeting and made it address my concerns, my daughter was targeted. This last dance, she was invited by your board members, and when she showed up, the police removed her. I have multiple emails and messages from this man, that man, Carol, the Director of Academic Services, inviting my daughter because your school at Columbia wrongfully terminated her whole eighth-grade graduation, everything, because I complained about some men going in the bathroom with her. I've called Sacramento. I've talked to people. They want to know, they asked me, "Where is the millions of dollars they gave you guys to tutor our children and bring them up when they fell behind during COVID?" When I asked your district for this tutoring, you told me you cannot provide these services, but you were given this money. Like they said, "Where is it?" As a parent, I want to know, where's my kid's money? Why is she not, why, when she goes to see the counselor, she is turned away? How can the counselors do their job when you won't let them? You have faculty members telling my daughter to go back to class. She is a special needs kid with suicidal tendencies, so she goes in the bathroom and cries because you guys won't let her see the counselor. It's just ridiculous. I am pulling my kids out. As of today, my kids are no longer in your district because you cannot keep them safe. Your PE teacher at Columbia, I have made multiple reports about him sexually assaulting students. This man and this man told me he's refusing to look into it. It's inappropriate. You have no control over your schools, and that's because your teachers don't respect you. It's just getting bad, and I personally have filed a complaint with the U.S. Department of Education for fraud, for stealing the money. You guys need to get audited. I've personally talked as the Director of Special Education, and I filed complaints. We have other parents here. You guys are not anything with special education. You know, I understand why you have some people resigning today. You guys aren't following, what do they call it, a 504s? You guys haven't followed my daughter's BIP for her IEP, her Behavior Intervention Plan? Instead of honoring her IEP, she is being punished for it. You know, and she started Columbia in September and has been suspended over ten times and instead of dealing and disciplining my kid, no, you are going to hear me. I will leave.
I need him to be escorted out. Thank you very much.
This time, Madam President, we're going to transition to the online request for closed session comments. And Mr. Sinatra, the first person, if you'd look to see if they are there, is Ms. Jeanette McCullough.
Oh, all right. Great. Thank you. Okay. Good evening, members of the board, superintendent, parents, community members, and fellow teachers. As a former teacher of Adelanto School District and current parent of a student in the district, I have many things to say about my disappointment in the 2022-2023 school year. But tonight's topic will solely look at the realm of special education students in this group being constant targets of bullying as the cause of lack of consistent administration. In the last seven years that I worked at Mesa Linda Middle School, it's been a revolving door of administrators. In those seven years, the school has seen five other admins never making it through a six, seven, eight-year cycle and each bringing in their own rules, regulations, and policies with nothing ever truly changing in terms of campus safety. The largest problem with bringing in the administration that changes so rapidly or the administration that's not fully staffed is that Mesa Linda Middle School needs a minimum of three administrators to run effectively. We've always been promised a fourth. That is illegal and correct, and then there's also the problem that the legal and correct IEP and 504 policies are not implemented at the school site. The district schools are missing subs to cover for general education teachers during the IEP and for the ELD coordinators. It's a problem. It's a legal problem. And I had an issue with cleaning up that mess constantly with that paperwork. And having those parents have to sign that form, or rather than being given their right to have their sub and have their ELD coordinator and have their general ed teacher at the meeting as a regular right is ridiculous. Class sizes that have been promised are not implemented in co-teaching situations, and this has driven away both seasoned special education and general education teachers for students. The class sizes go up, the ratio goes up, IEPs are violated. For the entirety of the 2022-2023 school year, one of the special education teachers has been acting as administrator and has been unable to be in the classroom, leaving the classroom to be run by a substitute and paraprofessionals. While we all do what we're called to in our place of work as being overrun, there's only so much that we can do. At this time, Mesa Linda faces another administrator At this time, Mesa Linda faces another administrator resignation. And it's upsetting. That person promised five years in a contract, and she's being let out. So now there is a new administrator being left to run for the rest of the year. It's a problem. This directly affected my child and her 504 as well. There's not an administrator to run the 504 meetings on time. This is usually the AAIC. I had to demand an update, work on a schedule change. Okay, I'll skip the part with my kid in her 504 because I'd like to make the ending statement instead, because that part's resolved, and she's finally on independent study. It's time to hire effectively, pay your teachers competitively, effectively, since they're all doing their administrative work too. Since you don't have administrators, allow those who are staying to do their job, complete it effectively, attract candidates can actually do their job and stay on campus. I wish you well, but I hope you're actually going to do the right thing this year. Thank you.
Is Mrs. Cecilia Lopez in the audience, or is she on Zoom? Okay, we'd like to welcome her to the podium.
Uh, good evening, board and cabinet. Good evening, parents that were able to come despite the multiple changes. Your dedication to your students is what keeps us going. So I will keep this short and sweet. I would like to make it very clear that this board, to the board this evening, that your administrative negotiating team has made no movement at the table to ensure that upper-grade class sizes do not exceed 30 students. By offering only status quo of the article regarding class size, we are nearly guaranteed to continue seeing classes of 32, 34, even 36. As you've stated several times, test scores and academic improvement are your top priorities. You must know that every student over that 30 count only lessens those numbers for your data. There is no amount of training tech programs or curriculum tricks that can replace a small group or one-on-one with a teacher to teach our students in those classrooms. Our students are still facing huge gaps from COVID years. We are trying desperately to fill the gaps, keep the pace, and keep the students feeling successful. This was going to be hard no matter what, but piling more students into our room with one teacher has made it feel impossible. Please don't just hear me tonight, or any of us. Please listen and retain this information. We don't just want smaller class sizes. We need smaller class sizes. Thank you.
Madam President, we'd like to call Mr. John Allen to the podium.
Before I start, I'd like to ask, can we have security like this on our campus? All right. Good evening, ladies, gentlemen, and my friends beyond the binary. I come before you tonight perplexed, embarrassed, and angry. I am perplexed trying to understand the district's motives concerning student outcome and learning opportunities, to the alluded to greatness that you told on about when describing this district, and to the management of funding that is crucial to the success of every student that walks into one of our classrooms. When I started my career as a teacher and with this district, I was hooked by a competitive salary and benefits package. As time went on, that competitive wage started to dissipate, much like the safety of students and staff alike with this district's campuses. During the first years, I falsely believed when this board said the words, "We hear you." I sat there thinking that these people must have the students' best interests at hand, but then more time went on. I am perplexed that in my four short years, I have survived three principals, four vice principals, and now this is my third superintendent. With a red hot and smoking revolving door of admin, you would think that the district would at least try to retain their qualified teaching staff and attract new and needed talent and professionals, but instead, they have chosen to become the least competitive district around. Educators, educators, uh, sorry, educators and staff are fleeing the district en masse in order to survive the ever-increasing cost of living, gas, groceries, we are all now burdened by. I am perplexed how this district can maintain a budgetary reserve that is numerous times larger than what is recommended and still claim that their greatest priority is their students. I am perplexed as to how the district can justify underpaying its teaching staff by $6.7 million, as stated per ed code 4132, 41372, and still have the audacity to utter the words, "We hear you." I am embarrassed when I have to explain to all too many parents that their student has not had a teacher an entire year, but instead of a series of long-term subs of revolving teacher coverage, I am embarrassed the students feel they're worth being diminished because they have had multiple teachers leave throughout the school year. I'm embarrassed that the staff has to use sites like DonorsChoose for classroom supplies. I am embarrassed that I have to stand in front of you tonight in a room nicer than any facility on my campus and remind you how much your students and staff are worth. I am angry. I am angry that instead of being with my family tonight, I have to be here to fight for my students, my coworkers, myself, and my family's own well-being. I'm angry that you believe your students and staff are only worth 5%. I am angry that you want to cram as many students into a classroom as possible while providing little to no support for your campuses. I am angry that you attempt to set aside a rainy day fund, yet you have failed to look outside and see that the flood is already here. And finally, I am angry that you are paying more attention to a timer than the words being spoken by the heart of your district. Thank you very much.
Madam President, we'd like to call Ms. Janice Keaton to the podium.
I have them on Zoom.
On Zoom? Okay, if you could ask them to unmute. Ms. Janice Keaton, welcome.
Good, good afternoon. My name is Janice, Ms. Keaton, and I am a seventh-grade language arts teacher at Columbia Middle School. I am here on behalf of myself and my family, as well as the families that I serve at my middle school and my students alike. I am here to ask the district to reconsider. I was notified on Valentine's Day that my name would be submitted tonight as a teacher who will not be re-elected for employment next year. I am kind of perplexed and confused because as I look around, I'm receiving text messages in the district office. I am seeing flyers saying that you are hiring in need of teachers. I have 30 years of classroom experience. I've had 13 years as a special ed instructional aide. This is my 17th year teaching, uh, language arts or English. I also obtain a master's degree, and I'm four classes away from finishing my admin credential. So I am highly qualified in the state of California. I have received recognition from the No Child Less Left Behind because I do have a master's degree. Um, I think it's unfortunate that the district is weeding out, um, highly qualified teachers such as myself. I know that there are several occupations and careers that people choose for various reasons, but I was not cho- chosen to be a teacher. I was born to teach, and I was born to help serve the underrepresented students that look exactly like me. I am urging, I'm desperately urging the, uh, district to reconsider my reemployment for 2023-24 school year, uh, to, uh, resume my position at Columbia Middle School, um, so that I can come finish, uh, so that I can continue to serve those students that are unrepresented. I do believe in the mission of the district, but I believe that, um, the district has to realize that teachers are human as well. I have been absent, and I believe that the reason that I am, um, probably up for non-reemployment next year is because I have been out on a medical leave of absence, um, from a doctor. But I just want the parents to know, if they don't see my face back in the classroom next year, it was not by my choice. I am capable. I am willing. I am highly qualified to help bring your children to the level where they need to be, um, as far as academically. I come to my classroom each day prepared with compassion. I have passed my teacher qualification that was given to me by my administrator, Mrs. Phillips, on campus back in September. So I am totally confused. When I met with, uh, Mr. Morgan, Carlos Morgan, I asked, "What was the reason for my non-election, uh, to have my position next year?" And I was told that he didn't have to give me a reason. So I just want parents in the district to know that I'm not done yet. I will continue to serve children until I can't do it anymore. Um, and I'm just asking for reconsideration. Whether it's in the district or, or elsewhere. I would love to continue to work for the community here in Toronto.
Madam President, that concludes our comments for a closed session.
Okay, moving on to five recess to close session. Trustees, can I get a motion to recess to close session?
Trustee Turner, motion to recess to close session.
Can I get a second, please?
Webster, I second.
Ms. LeVey, call for the vote. Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee LaFrench? LaFrench, aye. We're recessed.
Madam President, the time is 6:30 PM.
Thank you. Reconvene in an open session. The time is 9:18. Call to order. Establish form. Ms. LeVey, can you take role? Trustee Benz?
Uh, pre- present.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, present.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, present.
Trustee LaFrench? LaFrench, present. Moving on to seven, closed sessions report. Announcements of reportable actions taken during closed session. In closed session, the board took action to non-reelect employee number 6791647162376803, probationary certificated employees pursuant to Education Code Section 44929.21, effective at the end of the 2022-23 school year. The board directed the superintendent to send out appropriate legal notice. The roll call vote was as followed. Moved by Benz, second by Turner. Yays, Benz, Turner, Webster, and French. Moving on to public testimony. Mr. Kraus, do we have any speakers?
Yes, Madam President, we do, and this evening, in no certain order, we will ask Ms. Generator to come to the podium, please.
Uh, just to clarify, I'm not representing ADTA at this moment. I'm just speaking. Is that all right? Mister, um, yes.
To, we'd like to, um, take a vote or an, um, a motion to extend the board meeting. I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Can I get a motion to extend the board meeting? Another? How long?
No longer than 11:00.
Can I get a motion?
Webster, I motion to extend our board meeting till 11:00 PM.
Can I get a second?
Um, no later than 11:00.
Okay.
We can't re-extend.
I'm sorry.
We can't re- re-extend after the first one, right?
Okay, thank you. Ms. LeVey, can you call for the vote, please?
Turner, second.
Okay, uh, Trustee Webster?
Webster, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee LaFrench? LaFrench, aye. I'm sorry, Ms. Writer.
No, no worries. Okay, all right. Um, I just have a few questions that I want the board to consider. Why is the district so willing to pay a fine rather than meet a state ed code requirement for salary and benefit spending? Why is the information you're getting from your advisors so disparate from the information we have using the same budget? Why is the district changing the auditing firm you're using right after Nigro and Nigro found you were $6.7 million off the mark for spending? Were you aware that a student who has been kicked out of Mesa Linda, suspended four times from Columbia, smoked pot at school, cussed at teachers, ditched class, that she was going to be allowed to attend a special, um, extracurricular function in spite of all those misbehaviors and bad choices? Were you aware that Morgan and Kate had been scheduled to perform at this board meeting since the beginning of the year? And were you further awa- aware that we were removed from the agenda without any notification at all? And nobody knew until this morning, and it was only under pressure that the performances continued, and my class was not able to perform because my families couldn't shift gears that fast, so my group could not attend. The groups that did pretend, uh, perform were a lot smaller than had been arran- arranged previously because parents couldn't shift gears that fast. They were canceled. They didn't have time to practice today until the end of the day, then they were told they were on again. I don't know if the board was aware of that. Wanted to ask you. Were you aware? Were you aware that in order to show smaller class sizes, the district uses averages, including sped classes of between 12 and 17 kids? And are you aware of the fact that in a class of 34 to 36, the students don't care that somewhere else, there's a class of only 29? Those are just a few questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'd like to call Jessica Traeger to the podium. Is she on Zoom, Mr. Sinatra?
Can I get that name one more time?
Jessica Traeger. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. T-R-A-G-E-R.
Yes, I have a Jessica Traeger.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for welcoming.
You are unmuted now, and if you start your video, I'll add you to Spotlight. There we go.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Jessica Traeger. Give me just one moment. So the reason for my concern that I did want to address with the board is I have been a parent of the, of students in the Adelanto School District for over 15 years. In the 15 years, we've had really great experiences up until this last year. Um, unfortunately, with that being said, I feel like my daughter, my children are no longer a concern of the district in allowing them to ensure that they are safe. Um, I've been in constant, constant contact with Mr. Kraus over the last six months in regards to child welfare with busing. With that being said, um, my kids' buses originally were three to four kids to a seat. Since elementary- Since elementary school, we have sat there and ta- taught the kids to be safe and responsible, but on the busing, we've never had that, uh, we've had continuous problems. Now it's to the point where on a regular basis, the district allows my kid to stand on the side of the road for up to an hour. Not with no notification. Me and my husband both work full-time. We are blessed to have a good support system, but it's getting to the point where I hear my son tell, tell me how his classmates can no longer make it to school because both of their parents are stuck at work. And we're already an underserved community and we're failing our students. I've talked to Mr. Kraus about them taking and, um, doing admire and other alternative ways, um, retention bonuses for bus drivers. He's even offered to pay my mileage in the past and gas just to get my kids to school. I just want to know what the district is going to do to fix this. I hear about the teachers, I, I've seen the turnover with the teachers, unfortunately. And I would like to know what we can do to make this school district, a district that every kid, every, every parent is going to want to have their kid in this district because it's definitely not a district of choice at this time. I've also contemplated, contemplated pulling my two kids out of the district to go to a different district just because I feel like you guys are dis servicing my children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Madam President, we'd like to call Jessica Lemming to the podium, or if she's on Zoom. Mr. Sinatra?
I have them on Zoom, just a moment.
Thank you.
You may unmute now.
Okay. Hi there. Um, let's see if you can see me. There I am. All right. First of all, good evening to the board, Superintendent Kraus and Mr. Moran. Um, I'd like to offer my sincerest condolences to the ex-family. Um, Holly was a wonderful person and she is going to be very missed. Um, I am not here representing ADTA, I'm actually here to advocate for my students. I would like to say thank you, though. Um, thank you to my students and their families, uh, the other teachers that I work with, um, the community of Adelanto for being here and supporting us all tonight. I was at the board meeting and then, um, I have to get ready for work tomorrow, so I'm here at my house. I am here to advocate about the busing situation for my students' own well-being. Um, why are my students unable to come to school because busing issues are persistently disrupting their transportation and learning? My job is to help my students with their education. My job is to be there for my students. I am here tonight to show them what showing up for someone looks like, even when it's a school night and it's almost ten o'clock at night. I am, uh, it, I'm also a little, um, appalled because in the past three weeks alone, the three different, there were three different busing routes that weren't running to my school site. Um, and as a result, multiple students were unable to attend school for, uh, I had one student who couldn't attend for a week at a time. Um, during I A B's, busing issues also prevented my students from being able to take their necessary I A Bs all across their tested subject areas. My job is to help my students and help them complete these tests that you guys asked me to help them with. Um, your job is to make sure that they can make it to the, to the school site in order to do those tests. So, um, I appreciate you guys hearing me out. I appreciate you listening to the, the kiddos tonight, and I love the performance of Morgan Kincaid. So thank you to everybody and have a good evening. Um, and if any of my students are listening right now, I'll see you tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Next, Madam President, we'd like to call Melanie Caven. She's in the audience, or she's on Zoom. Mr. Sinatra?
I do not see them, let me keep looking.
C A V E N, Mr. Sinatra?
I do not see them, no.
We'd like to next call Eleanor Simmons.
I do not see any Zoomed by them either.
She's coming to the podium, Mr. Sinatra, thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Eleanor Simmons. My, my intention is to tell you experiences that I have had in my life. In my fifties, I became a parent of my grandchildren. They are grown and they have children now. And with my experiences growing them, L A, I volunteered for L A Unified for twenty-five years. I am a surrogate trained I E P person for surrogate C I Ps. I have been with mental health for twenty-five years. I've been on boards, I've been on committees with L A Unified. With mental health, I've been on boards and I've also been an employee as far as licensing of facilities. And so, and I have had experiences of contracts for homeless for the mentally ill. And I have had a long life and a good life. And I want to know that some of the things that I have seen and witnessed in your school district, you ought to be ashamed. It's terrible what's going on with our special needs children. There are many of them. They need help. They need you to understand how to deal with their disabilities. I have been, I have disabled children in my home. And I know what it's like. And I believe, I told mental health a few years ago when I went to a conference, I needed help and they wouldn't give it to me. Nobody would help me. They invited me and seven parents to a conference at Comanche. And I told all those professionals exactly what I could, they could do with their education and their books because what they were doing does not work. A week later, I had help. It's not good to be ignored and it's not good to not understand other people's problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'd like to call Maria Rivera to the podium, or if she's on Zoom.
Hello and good evening. And, um, excuse me that I'm a little tired and I need glasses. Um, I'm Maria Rivera, the TK teacher at Eagle Ranch Elementary. And I'm here to speak to you about our permanent TK aid that is required by the state. We have had substitutes all school year with one teacher who still doesn't have a consistent aid in the morning and only has one in the afternoon, still. I emailed all of you, board members, and, um, our academic services department and principals back in February seventh of twenty twenty-two. In efforts to make sure that we started the school year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three with our permanent TK aid. Nothing was done and we started off the year with substitutes. I even had to find my own substitute. And again, when my substitute was no longer available, I had to find my own substitute again. We, the teachers, had a district meeting with academic services regarding the TK program May of twenty twenty-two. And at that meeting, again, we discussed the need for support, especially a new TK curriculum. But since then, we have not had any other meetings regarding our TK program. We need the support of academic services. I have, um, forwarded you the email last night of everything that we discussed at that meeting in May. And one thing that we discussed at that meeting was the need for a new TK curriculum that's geared towards, you know, three, four, and five-year-olds. Um, because what we have is eleven years old. Eleven years old, and it's itty-bitty. Um, we really need that support and guidance from our district. I spoke to Dr. Doizen in, uh, August of twenty twenty-two and I asked her, you know, what's going on with our permanent TK aid. Our, our TK students get attached every time there's somebody new. They build relationships and it's hard on them. Till this day, they're asking me about the, the.
I'm sorry, there's a disruption with someone talking. Please allow her to speak without interruption.
Yeah. So in, um, Dr. Doizen said, you know, Mrs. Rivera, these things take time. Um, and I understand that, things take time. I came and I spoke to you guys in December regarding, and it seems like the position hasn't been posted. It has been one year. We're in February that I've been asking about our, our aid. Um, and act some, somehow academic services and C S E A still cannot agree on a job description for TK aid. How is that possible? Other districts are ahead of us. Our district is always behind and that makes me sad. My TK friends in other school districts have everything they need, including new cubbies, new tables, chairs are appropriate, um, size for the kids. They even have a brand-new curriculum that is geared towards preschool-age children. The program Victor Elementary School District, um, is called Frog Street. You know, and, uh, it just seems like our students are not a priority in this district. Uh, we want to provide our very young students with the best education possible to help them build a strong social, emotional skills. You know, speaking and reading and writing, but we cannot do that without the appropriate resources. It's been one year. Thank you for your time, let's do better for our students.
Thank you.
Next, we'd like to call Madison McCullough to the podium, please. Sorry about that. Next, we'd like to call Jorge Camacho to the podium, or if he's on Zoom. Mr. Sinatra, do you see, uh, Jorge Camacho?
I do not see a Jorge on Zoom, no.
Okay. Moving on to, uh, Mr. Carlos Reliano. Um, are they in the audience or perhaps on Zoom?
Maybe I have a Carlos and Janine on Zoom. If you can raise your hand, let me know that's you. I can have someone unmute and just see.
Are you able to verify, Mr. Sinatra?
I'm not getting a response, I've asked to unmute and.
Moving along to Ms. Yasmin Martin. You see a Yasmin Martin?
I do see Yasmin on Zoom, I'm asking them to unmute now.
Hello, good evening, everyone.
Hello, good evening.
Um, here we go. My name is Yasmin Martin. I'm a CNS employee and a parent at the district since two thousand eighteen. Um, I am an all-in type of person, um, and I know that life gives you what you give. So I'm speaking tonight because I feel let down. Every year, the school in, the schools in my neighborhood are less and less safe. There seems to be the same amount of kids and more, but less adults to supervise. My fourth grader, um, who has been a student, um, at Ted Vic since kindergarten, he has been involved in four physical altercations this year alone. When, had there been proper supervision, he never would have had to be involved since they were in defense of another child. His in-class time is consistently being interrupted by willfully disruptive students that know the consequences will be light and his test scores are suffering because of it. My child in middle school honors classes has a long, has had long-term subs in every core class except for history all year. How can we claim to prepare our kids for college when eighth grade core classes are not covered? The lack of consequences at that school has led to multiple need for law enforcement involvement this year, including them having tested multiple students last week with a breath test following a vape incident. As a parent, this is not what I signed up for. The teachers at my children's schools are educated, caring, and creative individuals that deserve to be supported. We should not be worry, we, we should not be worried about the safety of our children while they're in class because they have another sub who can't control the class. I should not have to worry about my two high-achieving kids barely testing at their grade level because another teacher left to a higher-paying district or their teachers are not being supported outside of the classroom by admin for behaviors in class. How do we continue to force our kids to go to school when all they're doing is surviving? This board directly controls how our teachers are paid, the ratio of children to adults inside and outside of the classroom, and the severity of discipline that's happening. I'm asking you today to pay our teachers better, lower class sizes, and ratio of adults to students outside of class and hold parents and students. Sorry, one, one more line. To a higher level of behavior to our kids. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
Next, Madam President, we'd like to see if Melody Gronewold, and I apologize if I mispronounced her last name. Mr. Sinatra, do you see Melody in the Zoom meeting for a chance? G R O N E W O L D.
I do not see a Melody nor a Gronewold.
How about Ms. Vanessa Cortez?
I do have a Vanessa on Zoom, I can ask them to unmute now.
I am not, I'm actually not the Vanessa you're looking for, I just thought I'd let you know that.
Awesome, thank you. And I do not have another Vanessa on Zoom.
How about Mr. Brian Hahn, Mr. Hahn?
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Board President, LaFrench, trustee Turner, trustee Webster, and trustee Benz, Superintendent Kraus, and Mr. Moran. My name is Brian Hahn, I'm proudly serving as the Vice President of the Teachers Association. First, I come to you tonight, and when I was in the room, I really felt a strong presence of Holly Ekis here. And I heard so many impassioned teachers speaking, as I'm sure you did as well. And then, when I took a walk after you went into closed session, I saw Brad and Eric, and I just want to acknowledge, uh, their presence here doing the same thing that their mom would have done, and that was to listen to all of us, to listen to the concerns. So thank you for being here, gentlemen. The next thing I want to bring to your attention is one of our TK teachers, uh, Sherry Misselli. She was actually on her way into the boardroom tonight. And, uh, in the parking lot out here, uh, there's, there's some uneven pavement to where the, the concrete is. And she wound up tripping and, uh, and falling and being injured, and she wound up going to urgent care. Um, but perhaps when it's daylight, somebody could take a look at the, uh, the area out here. Um, thirdly, I want to say thank you. Um, first of all, thank you, uh, to Mrs. Turner, trustee Turner, for, uh, being present for two of our Black History Month presentations at Morgan Kincaid on Thursday. Um, that was awesome. We appreciate, uh, having you there, we really were happy to see you. And I was on the other side of the room, otherwise I would have, I had, I had my twenty-four, so, uh, I couldn't make it over, uh, to say hi, but, uh, we, we definitely want you to know we, uh, were happy you were there. And then tonight, we want to thank you for allowing our students from Morgan Kincaid to perform. And I think they were well received by all. And just many thanks, many thanks. And I know it has extended your evening, and I know it's late. And but my main goal tonight was I had promised our TK teachers that I would address some of their concerns. And Mrs. Rivera did speak to some of those, but I'm going to also I'm going to also review some of the things that she referenced that the TK teachers have just wanted, and they've tried for about a year to get them. And I'll read off some of them. Would you like to pass these out to everyone? Thank you. You'll see that right at the top of the list, they really want the TPT school access, and they'd like the Tara West TK Language Arts and Math Curriculum Program. They have received the Heidi Songs Sight Words Music and Movement. But that was all they received. Our district used to heavily support for both TK and kinder, the Starfall Program. And for some reason, that was stopped. The subscription stopped. And I think it would be a huge benefit to not only our TK but our kinders as well. Some other issues that are other items that they are looking for, a dramatic play center, buckets of Play-Doh, foam blocks, Duplo blocks, kinetic sand, stem boxes, squish and squeeze sensory beads, kinetic sensory sand, community helpers block people. And, you know, when you look at the list, it's really, it's pretty small. It's really not, it's not a huge ask. And I would just hope that the board would consider some of these purchases for our TK teachers. The next thing that the TK teachers wanted me to make sure you knew was some of the conversations and things that had gone on for the last year with with the Academic Services Department, and if you would like to pass those out. And pretty much it speaks for itself. I'm not going to read everything to you. You can peruse this at your own leisure, but I think you will have a better understanding of the frustration that our TK teachers are feeling right now, and they're not feeling as supported as they should feel. And in conclusion, some of the talking points and concerns were at the beginning of the school year in August of 2022. The TK teachers were told by Dr. Doizen and Carol Coburn to create a list of their current TK needs and items that were needed for the classroom. And like I said, they received the Heidi Songs, and $100 per teacher was spent for a total of six classrooms, but other than that, they did not receive anything. The teachers also are concerned about why it's taking so long to create a job description for TK para with CSEA for our permanent TK para professionals. And Mrs. Rivera and Ms. Miselli wrote an email on February 7th of 2022 to notify the district of the paras that were needed in their classrooms by law. And while they have substitutes and they have people that are coming in, they are not receiving the powers that, you know, the stability of a single para per classroom that they so desire. The TK teachers also met with the district administrators one time on May 19th of 2022. And at that time, everything sounded pretty good to the teachers as to what would happen. But unfortunately, nothing ever happened as a result of that meeting. The TK teachers also would like a new curriculum because the one, as Mrs. Rivera stated, is outdated. It's 11 years old. And they do not feel that academic services is really providing the support that they truly need for each of their classrooms. And finally, as teachers, they want you to know that they have district TK meetings to share their concerns and receive district support in order to best meet the students' needs. But when they bring up their concerns, they often feel that their concerns are not heard, and resources are not provided to address them. Finally, the Transitional K Program is to provide students with a strong educational foundation, and we need to work together in order to give children our best. We feel alone and unsupported. Please help us do better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, that concludes public comments for open session this evening.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Section 9 Cabinet Reports.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, this evening, Dr. Dwyson is online. Mr. Sinatra, we're going to start with Academic Services. And if you can ask Dr. Dwyson to unmute and share out some of the things going on in Academic Services this evening.
Good evening. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Board President La French, Board of Trustees and AESD staff and community. I'm pleased to share some of our highlights from Academic Services this evening. So first of all, we're excited to welcome our new Director for State and Federal Programs, Ms. Diana or Dr. Diana Ochoa. She's currently been in onboarding this past week and meeting our amazing staff across the district. She's already jumped in to support us to close out our FPM that we've been working on and also get started with our SIPs and also required documents for the state. We received the CDE guidance for schools who are labeled ATS I or CSI. ATS I is Additional Targeted and Support and Improvement, which is typically a student group in need of improvement for ATS I. CSI is a comprehensive school support and improvement, and we're proud to announce that three of our schools exited CSI. That would be Braddock, Westside Park in El Mirage, for their efforts. So we're very proud of them, and we look forward to all of our schools moving out of those designated ATS I or CSI designations. We are currently wrapping up the, I want to emphasize TK 12 textbook adoption process for our history, social science, and we look forward to sharing those results at a later date. Those curriculum choices, they do take time to make sure that we're involving all of our stakeholders. And so just know that we start with the foundation of curriculum first, making sure so that is in the process. And again, it is TK all the way up to eighth grade, not 12th grade. I misspoke on that. So I did want to piggyback for just a minute as it relates to curriculum, so I was hearing some of those concerns from TK. They should have received access to TPT, so I'll have my team resend those out. Those were given. And so we also were able to make sure that we will review that list and move forward and add to those manipulatives and different Legos and things that we did deliver, hand-delivered earlier this year to the classrooms, but we'll look over those lists and make sure that we add additional items based on what we need. So right now, we're also entering our testing season for the new school year. Currently, we're working on the LPAC, the CAH, which is the California Alternative Assessment for Science, and also the physical fitness test for our students. And so we'd like to thank all the sites, the administrators, teachers for their hard work and support to make sure that testing goes smoothly. And then coming up on Saturday, May 20th, I'd like to announce our Writing and Arts Fair at George. And we look forward to sharing more information in the coming months about this event. That's going to highlight our hard work of the accomplishments of our students. So at this time, that concludes our updates for Academic Services. Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Dr. Dwyson. And now I'd like to have Mr. Carlos Moran and Human Resources give us an update.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kraus. Thank you, Dr. Dwyson. Good evening. Good evening, President La French, Trustees, Mr. Kraus, district colleagues, and community members. I'd like to start off with negotiations. So I shared last time, we've completed five negotiation sessions with our ADTA partners, October 18th, November 1st, December 6th, January 31st, and last week on February 14th. We have exchange proposals and counter proposals on several articles that were sunshine to be negotiated this year. Later tonight, under consent items, you will see the school calendar for the 24-25 school year. Our next scheduled negotiations meeting takes place Tuesday, February 28th. For CSEA, I'd like to share that we've completed five negotiation meetings with our CSEA partners, October 28th, November 9th, December 8th, 2022, January 6th, and February 3rd of this year. CSEA and the district continue making good progress on negotiations, and we've tentatively agreed on several articles. Our next meeting takes place tomorrow, Wednesday, February 22nd. District will continue to meet and work collaboratively with ADTA and CSEA union partners to reach fair and reasonable agreements that support our employees and student achievement. An update from our certificated side of the house and HR. We're having a job fair that's going to be held here at the district office boardroom on March 6th and March 8th from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Information has already been sent out. We have certificated interviews for the 23-24 school year that have commenced. So we are looking forward to starting the school year fully staffed. So again, those interviews are starting as we're getting applicants. Updated recruitment flyers and folders were also made in anticipation of our job fairs that we will be attending starting March. And the first one, I believe, is going to be at Cal Baptist. We are planning a second secretary/clerk meeting for the 22-23 school year. This meeting provides all departments with an opportunity to provide updates and necessary information to all of our school sites directly. As far as an update on the classified side of the house, again, we're planning that secretary and clerk meeting. And again, this gives them an opportunity for those updates. I'd also like to thank Principal Mrs. Malana at Ted Vicks. She and I visited many of her classrooms last week and enjoyed watching many students on task, working hard. It was great to see the student work and the writing on the walls. Students were learning about Black History, preparing for their Black History event that took place last Friday. As a side note, I'd also like to thank Mrs. Martinez, teacher from Ted Vicks, for having her students sing a very cute and creative song on contractions. So I appreciate that. I'd also like to thank Mr. Alex Verdusco, Principal at Victoria McGathen, and Ms. Jadek Griffith, the Assistant Principal, for hosting and inviting us to their Black History event last week. It was fantastic watching students performing songs, chants, poems, historical information in both English and Spanish, since they have the dual immersion program there. And they shared about the history of influential Black men and women who have helped pave the way to new laws, inventions, and actions. Of course, people like Martin Luther King Jr., Rosa Parks, Frederick Douglass, Harriet Tubman, Mae Jameson, George Washington Carter, Jackie Robinson, and many others. In addition, they had some beautiful art that was posted on their walls. Trustee Turner happened to be there when I was there, and we took some pictures. So it was fantastic what we saw. Lastly, I'd like to end my remarks on a quote that Ms. Ontiveros had posted on a chart there in the cafeteria at Ted Vicks, and Ms. Trustee Turner had pointed it out for me. And the quote was by Martin Luther King Jr., and it reads, "The function of education is to teach one to think intensively and to think critically. Intelligence plus character, that is the goal of true education." Martin Luther King Jr. Thank you for listening. These conclude my comments for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Moran, and Madam President, members of the board, good evening. I'll take this opportunity at this time to share a few comments with the board and the public. And first off, Eric and Bradley Ekerson in the house here this evening with us. My sincere condolences on behalf of our board, our family. To my left, we have an emptiness on this dais that can never be filled. And I know the family has the same and feels the same. And so again, our sincere condolences. We appreciate you both being here this evening, this board meeting. I want to thank all of the people that came out this evening to join us for a board meeting earlier tonight. If you had an opportunity to see, we had a packed house. And I sincerely appreciate all of the comments from all of our speakers, whether they're in person or online. It is always refreshing to have a full house and have people passionate about what they do in the classroom and for our district and for our students. And so thank you for all of them that came out tonight. I also want to say thank you to Morgan Kincaid for their presentation this evening. Great opportunity to showcase what's going on there with the students. I own the confusion this evening, and I want to apologize to the staff at Morgan Kincaid and to the parents and families. I own that confusion, and I will ensure that we do better in the future related to communication. But we do appreciate those that came out this evening, and I know there were others that wanted to come out. And so we thank you for your willingness to come out as well, and even if you didn't have an opportunity to join us this evening. We hope to see you at a future board presentation. I also want to thank George in the back of our boardroom. We decorate our walls every month. A different school comes and does decorating. And this month, we had George come and decorate, and there's a lot of great, if you have an opportunity to come to our boardroom, you don't have to come when we have board meetings. You can come anytime you like. Our district office is an open place. Come out and see all the great work every month that our school sites do on the back wall. Thank you, Mr. Sinatra, for showcasing that. That's really nice that they put that up and decorated. So kudos to them and every school every month that comes and decorates our back wall so that when we do have board meetings, they can showcase the talent that's going on there. Now I'd like to move on to a few things I want to address this evening that I've heard either over the last several weeks or potentially this week, potentially this evening. The first thing I will emphasize again, and I have sent out many emails, and I will also work with staff once again. No staff member in our district should have to pay for school supplies in any shape, fashion, or form if they work with their principal and go to the principal or administrator of their school site and ask them for supplies for the classroom. There is no reason why, unless it's very unreasonable, which I highly doubt, it should be denied. So I want to make it clear that nobody should be paying out of pocket for supplies for the classroom. If you are aware of that, please let me know, and I will look into it myself as well. But again, I recommend you go to your site administrators at your school sites because no one should have to pay for school supplies in our district, not now, not tomorrow, not any time in the future, as long as we are here. The other thing I heard this evening that we did, my condolences to the person that fell in our parking lot. MNO has already been notified. We are on it. I appreciate Mr. Hahn bringing that up, but we are on it as well. Thank you so much. I hope that she's okay. I happened to see her before the board meeting started over there by the restrooms. And so hoping that everything will be all right with her, but we will definitely examine our parking lot to see if there's areas that we need to address moving forward. So thank you again for bringing that up this evening there. Also, Mr. Hahn, about the TK supplies, I know Dr. Dwyson heard you. She was out there on Zoom, and she is on it as well, checking with her team. So thank you very much for that. I intend to visit every TK classroom in the coming weeks and check on those teachers, check on the supplies, check on anything that we are able to do to support them as well as work with our site principals, if they are aware of things they need to let their principals know as well. But again, we will make sure that they have, whether it's curriculum, whether it's supplies, whatever it is that they need. But again, we will make sure that they have, whether it's curriculum, whether it's supplies, whatever it is that they need, we'll make sure that they have. And I don't want the TK teachers to feel like they're not being heard, because they are. And again, we heard them tonight, and thank you for your avocation of what they need for that. Appreciate the documents they shared with the board and cabinet this evening on that. There were some questions this evening also related to our auditing process. So every three years, every district has to go out, they do a request for proposals where they submit for new auditor, whether they need one or not. It's just the process that we do. And so we have our purchasing department, and thank you to Lori McMillan, because she does a great job over in our purchasing department of coordinating the efforts of any time we do our request for proposals, RFP. And so she solicited RFPs from auditors, random auditors, submit their submissions. The way the process works is that there's a committee. I am not privy to who's on that committee. I am not privy to who has submitted auditing requests for proposals, who has submitted proposals. The committee examines all the proposals. They score them in this evening. And every time we have an RFP, you will see that there's a scoring sheet, all the, we're very transparent how they were scored. And it's not always about cost necessarily. There's other factors that come into play. But I want to let you know that there was no specific reason that one company was picked over the other, other than the fact that the committee chose that selection, made the recommendation. And I value staff's recommendations unless I feel that there's something that is not right about their recommendation. I do not have any concerns about this current company that the committee did select and recommend to cabinet and then hence to the board. So I want to make that clear that there is no particular reason, other than that's the normal process that you will see. If you're in a district long enough, you will see it several times, usually about every three years. It happens with auditors. It happens with other people that we need services from, such as auditing and other things. So wanted to clarify that. I also wanted to mention that it's been said in the past that our district is in fiscal distress. Need to make it clear right now that that is not the case. We work with our county office of education on a daily basis. We work with our independent auditors on a daily basis. All of our interim reports and budget reports are online, transparent for anybody out there to see. And I welcome anybody that would like to sit down with myself or our team to go over them. If you need help with clarification on what they are, what's in there, I'd be more than happy to do that. But I want to make it clear that there were comments made in prior meetings about state takeover that is so not untrue. There's no truth to any of that. This board would be the first to know, and they would hold our team accountable, should that even be the case. We have a solid multi-year projection, which means we can pay our bills in the current year and the two out years. And I, I just want to emphasize that we've also heard the word embezzlement out there. And I can tell you that we will not tolerate anyone making accusations related to embezzlement of our district and our district staff and our district operations. So I had the privilege of becoming the CBO for several years before I became the interim superintendent and the superintendent. And one thing I know is numbers, and I challenge anybody out there to provide evidence of any kind of embezzlement going on in this district, because I will be the first one to report it, whether it's myself or anyone on this dais or anyone in this district. So it really, really is depressing to me to hear these words, that there's embezzling going on, that we're investigating the district, that we're calling everybody and their uncle. Call everybody and their uncle and have them come by. We'd love to talk to them. And we'd love to waste their time, because that's what it will be, a waste of their time. And it's very reckless and careless to scare our families into thinking that we're in financial distress. It scares our students. If we're here for our students and our families, and we're out there spinning this that, hey, this district's in trouble financially, they're going to go under. They're going to get state takeover. To me, that's reckless and careless, and that does a disservice to the hardworking families of Adelanto and our community. So the next time anyone wants to say something like that, please think about our families and our children and our students. And if you have proof, again, you don't have to give it to me. The sheriff's department is down here on Air Expressway in Bartlett. The captain of the station would be more than happy to look into any kind of claims. So the district attorney down in San Bernardino, any kind of claims that you have related to embezzlement or any other things you think is going on. And Mr. Ted Alejandra, the county superintendent of schools for San Bernardino County, would also love to hear from you with any kind of proof that you have. But again, I just think it's reckless, and I would hope that you would think twice before you make those kinds of statements publicly. Everyone has their First Amendment rights, but I just want to make sure that, make that clear. I would be the first to know if there was any kind of fraud or embezzlement going on in our district, whether it's myself or anyone else that was doing it. The last thing I wanted to mention is we hear a lot about the CEA formula. And so one of the things is a calculation that is calculated by the state every year about compensation, classroom compensation. And sixty percent, you hear the sixty percent number. That is true. That is correct. However, we received about twenty-four million in SIR funds, which is one-time monies. And we have requirements to spend those monies down when we receive them. And so the SIR funds are not ongoing classroom expenditures. They are SIR funds. So they did increase the formula on expenditures, which threw off our CEA. Yes, it is off. It is off. It is not at sixty percent. I, I will not debate that. However, we are not giving money back to the state. We are not being fined. We are not going to jail. There is nothing about it, other than we need to make sure that we meet our CEA this year and make up for the past year where we did not have that sixty percent expenditure. And so it's difficult to do when we have a lot of one-time funds that we have to spend. But our team is working diligently to work with our county office of education on how to make sure that we meet our CEA, even if it's at sixty point one percent. We will do that, and we constantly are working with him. Mr. Zach Clemish, thank you to him and his team in the budget office and fiscal to continually do that for us. So I know it's been a item of discussion. And again, I'd be, I welcome anyone that wants to sit down with me. I'd be more than happy to discuss it with you, show you how it works, show you why it is where it is. And we don't like it there either, but at the end of the day, mathematical formulas are what they are, and we have to work within those formulas. And so thank you for your time, Madam President, members of the board, and that's all my comments this evening.
Thank you. Moving on to section ten, staff reports and presentation.
Yes, Madam President, thank you. This time I'd like to call Lieutenant Colonel Cook Askins up to the dais. He just has a short verbal presentation this evening. We are excited to be bringing the California Cadet Corps program potentially to our district at Mesa, London, Columbia. Three periods at Mesa, London, and three periods at Columbia next school year. And so Colonel Cook Askins is oversees the High Desert and other areas of the California Cadet Corps program. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Cook Askins.
Good evening, Madam President, trustee, superintendent Kraus and cabinet. As Superintendent Kraus already just mentioned, I serve as the brigade advisor, the regional director for all of the California Cadet Corps units here in the High Desert, which is currently in eleven schools with nearly five hundred cadets. And statewide, the California Cadet Corps is in ninety-two schools with over six thousand cadets. So we're a well-known program in the state of California. Our primary focus is to develop leadership in teaching leadership, citizenship, patriotism, as well as basic military knowledge and health and wellness, as well as skills that are going to be beneficial to the cadets present, as well as in their future, as they progress through school, as well as graduating and becoming successful citizens, not only for our state, but also for our country. And I've been working with Superintendent Kraus and cabinet for the last several months to bring this item to the board this evening, and we are looking forward to onboarding the program for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And we know that the program's going to be a great benefit to the district and the community of Adelanto. And I'm here to answer any questions that the president or trustees or cabinet may have.
Or does anyone have any questions?
Well, I don't have any questions, but I do know my son was in Cadet Corps when he went to Riverside Prep for a short, short time. And he enjoyed it. I did not, because I had to iron his uniforms. I didn't appreciate that very much every Wednesday.
Wednesday, yes.
I had to do, do those carisas just right. But anyways, I am proud because my son is in the Army now, and he will graduate base, basic training in April.
Wonderful.
So, and, and I do appreciate, you know, the structure that, that was brought to him through, through that, because then it piqued his interest, and then he went from there.
Yes.
So, and I'm real, really excited, you know, hope hopefully that it comes and we can get that start started for, for our kids, because my son, he's got himself a great job. He's going to be a drone operator. So it's, it's exciting.
Exciting. Yes, thank you.
I have no questions, but I would just like to say I'm happy that we're bringing that program to our students of Adelanto, and I know that they will benefit from it. My husband and my husband was in the United States Army and my son in the Navy, so I know how important, you know, that structure is. And I, I'm just looking forward to it. So thank you for bringing that to us.
Welcome.
Mr. Kraus for, you know, seeking that terrific program. Our, our parents and our students will benefit. Well, our entire community will benefit from it. So thank you.
Welcome.
And all your, your flag.
Absolutely. You're welcome.
Trustee Webster?
I'm excited to see you come.
Yes.
Well, I wasn't going to brag too much, but I want to say that I'm actually very, very excited for our students to be able to participate. And I had my son-in-law that graduated from Silverado, and he's in the Navy. They're twenty-three years old, the two of them, him and my daughter. They have two little ones. And the structure that came from being in the cadet program for him taught him leadership as a man to take care of his family. And I miss them dearly, because they're always gone someplace underwater, but they're so young. But, you know, it taught him responsibility along with me teaching her responsibility. And I, they just swore every single year. I'm so proud of them.
Yes.
Okay, that being said.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along on eleven. Adoption of the minutes. Eleven-on-one board minutes, I'm sorry. It's getting late. Approved as written and order field special board meeting of January the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, regular board meeting of January the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, and special board meeting of February the seventh, twenty-twenty-three. Trustees, I need a motion to adopt the minutes.
Webster, I motion.
Hold on a second.
Any discussion? Bens?
No.
Turner?
No discussion.
Webster? No discussion. Hearing none. Ms. LeVey, please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee Bens?
Bens, aye.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, aye. Motion pass four zero. Section twelve, consent agenda. We are taking items twelve point zero two through twelve point three, three. Does any trustee want to pull an item?
Bens, I'd like, like to, to pull twelve point zero nine.
Webster, I would like to pull twelve point two seven.
And Turner, I would like to pull twelve point twenty-seven. Did you pull? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Wasn't listening. I'm sorry.
Okay. I see how important I am.
With the exception of twelve point zero nine and twelve point two seven, can I get a motion?
Also, wait a minute. I wanted to pull twelve point two seven. It's two seven, oh seven, and oh nine, right?
Twelve point two seven, Webster pulled. Twelve point zero nine, Bens pulled. You want to pull one different?
Yes, twelve point two seven.
Am I saying that right?
No, twelve twenty-seven is what I pulled.
Twelve point two seven?
What, what am I pulling? Twelve point zero seven? I circled the wrong one? I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. All right.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
It's late. It's okay.
Okay.
I've been up since five, five o'clock. Okay. So I need a motion to approve the rest of the agenda excluding twelve point two seven and twelve point zero nine.
Hey, Bens, I, I mo- motion to approve the, the, the remaining items. Mine, mine is twelve point zero nine and twelve point two seven.
Trustee Turner, I second.
Any discussion?
I don't think we discussed.
Ms. LeVey, can you call for the vote, please?
Webster, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee Bens?
Bens, aye.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, aye. Motion passes four zero. Thirteen items removed from the consent agenda. Can I get a motion? To this, can I get a motion to discuss?
To approve.
Can I get a motion to approve? Twelve oh nine?
Bens, I mo- motion to, to approve.
Can I get a second?
Turner, I second.
We're in discussion. Any discussion, Bens?
Okay, so I brought, brought this up because I just want, wanted, wanted to have a, just a quick little discussion, since there's always, you know, fraud and corruption. And I wanted, and I had spoke, spoken to super superintendent Kraus about, about, about this, about how it works with him as the superintendent to have the signature authority. Authority, but he's also key keeping it as the assistant superintendent of biz business. And I'd like for him to clarify, clarify how that, that works when he signs things.
Absolutely. Thank you, trustee Bens. And so anytime there is a title change within, for instance, the superintendent or the assistant superintendent, way earlier, a long time ago, the board approved signature authority as assistant superintendent of business for myself. When the board approved me as the interim superintendent, we had to take these forms back, because now the title was wrong in the county, who audits every single thing we do, including signatures of anything, contracts, checks. They need us to update it. So here this evening, when the board approved me as superintendent on January twenty-fourth, we now are removing the interim superintendent and becoming the superintendent as far as signature authority. All checks have to have two signatures, no matter what. So I can't just be signing checks to anybody and everybody out there and all my friends. I literally have to have two signatures. And in the absence of a assistant superintendent of business, we usually get the board president to sign if need be in a state of emergency for anything that needs two signatures. But luckily, we don't actually write checks very often in this district. They all are generated through the county office of education. Once we do hire an assistant superintendent of business services, at that point, then they will also be approved for signature authority and be the secondary signer on any checks that the district has, if we issue any.
Okay, thank, thank you. That's, that's all I've got.
Turner?
I have no questions.
Webster?
I'm good. Thank you.
Ms. LeVey, can you call for the vote?
Trustee Webster? Webster, aye. Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee Bens?
Bens, aye.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, aye. Motion pass four zero. Can I get a motion for twelve point two seven?
Yes, Webster, I motion to table this agenda item twelve point two seven until the next meeting.
Turner, I second.
Any discussion? Bens?
I have none.
Turner?
None.
Webster?
None.
Ms. LeVey, can you call for the vote, please?
Trustee Webster? Aye. Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee Bens?
Bens, aye.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, aye. Motion pass four zero. Moving on to new business. Trustees, I need a motion to approve resolution twenty-two point two three point one nine, process of filling government board's vacancy.
Bens, I mo- motion to, to, to approve res- resolution two two point two three point one nine.
Can I get a second?
Webster, I second. Webster, I second.
Thank you. Now we're going into discussion. Um, Mr. um Kraus, can you give us some detail, please?
Yes, Madam President and members of the board. Unfortunately, this item is before us this evening. It's a process that we go through whenever there is a seat that needs to be filled. And so this evening, uh, the first action under this item, the board will have to decide are two committee members from the four board members on the dais, who will be part of the selection process. Uh, once they are determined this evening under this item, uh, and if this item is approved, this resolution is approved, staff are already prepared to uh post the vacancy uh on our district website, on Facebook, on in the newspaper, uh everywhere that we can, several locations uh to advertise the vacancy, to cast as wide as net as possible for this uh vacancy. Uh, once we do that, uh, the deadline to submit the applications will be Friday, March third. And then the application review and screening process will be conducted by the uh two selected committee members, the two trustees this evening. Uh, we will then have post the names of the candidates on March fifteenth, at which time we will then uh have a special board meeting on March twenty-first. So on March twenty-first, we have a special board meeting to interview. Uh, the board will interview the candidates, the potential candidates, and then potentially swearing in on March twenty-first. And so that is the ending. Tonight starts the beginning. March twenty-first is potentially the ending. Uh, we do have until April seventh to fill this seat, but it definitely has to be done by April seventh. So again, these are tentative dead dates that uh I am uh giving the board this evening uh as the process. But again, the first step is to decide the two committee members and then approve the vacancy uh resolution this evening, and then we start advertising and go through those dates as noted.
I just have one thing that. Sorry. I just have one um suggestion because um the twenty-first is fall and during spring break, whether or not if we would be willing to pick another um date.
Uh, we are very flexible. That's up to the board for board discussion to uh amongst the board members to decide on a different date. Again, as long as we have this done by April seventh, then we will meet our uh legal deadlines to fill this vacancy. So whatever, another date possibly that pleases the board members here this evening, if I can get consensus from the board members.
Uh, President Benz, can I re- I mean, uh, LaFrench, can I recommend that we go to that next Tuesday, the twenty-eighth? And I would like to be a part of that committee. On that committee.
Okay. Now, then welcome for a discussion right now. Um Benz? Benz, you want me to say some something, or you want me to vol- volunteer to be the one? Okay, so let's do um, let's volunteer for the for the committee and then we'll go back to the date.
Okay, well, um, I can, I can work with tr- trustee turn Turner to go go over the applications, if you would like for me to. I don't mind. And I'm fine with the date of the twen- twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth, and then the post the vacancy on the thirty-first. And then we'll be in line for April seventh?
If we have our special board meeting, trustee Turner on the twenty-eighth, and we'll have our uh selection and swearing in on the twenty-eighth of March, we will be good to go uh and meet the deadline of April seventh by doing it that way.
Okay, and then we'll post the vacancy because right now we have posted vacancy on the twenty-fourth. So we're just saying that down another day as well.
I I think that I I do apologize. That is a typo. We will post the vacancy this evening if this resolution is is approved this evening. Advertise the vacancy.
Okay.
Pepsi Webster, uh huh. This is so hard for me. Trustee Webster, do you have any discussion?
No, I'll be okay.
Okay, so we have um trustee Turner and trustee Benz that will be on the committee.
So noted.
I guess what this posted vacancy meant was we were going to advertise it, not post the vacancy, but post the position of the new trustee. So that's what that day will be.
That's correct, madam. Yes, that's correct, trustee Turner.
So we just need to change this language here.
Yes.
Send it out to the newspaper and whatever, post the name of the candidate that's selected.
So we'll move that to the thirty-first.
Right.
That is correct.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. LeVey, we call for the vote, please.
Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, aye. Motion pass four-zero. Moving on to fourteen oh-two twenty twenty-three California Board of Association Delegate Assembly Election. Trustees, I need a motion to approve for up to six candidates and the election for a CSBA delegate assembly representative for the sub-region sixteen dash B.
We, I I motion, do do I have to say her name, or can we just say mo- mo- motion to start this process? I mo- motion for us to pick nom nominees, to vote on nom nominees.
Act- we need to motion for a particular candidate.
That is correct.
So we have a list.
Uh, Anthony, can you put it, put it up there? If you click on it, it has the names on there.
I motion Eric Swanson of this area Unified School District.
I s- I sec- second that mo- mo- motion.
Ms. LeVey, can you call for the vote, please?
Trustee Webster?
Webster, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee LaFrench?
La- LaFrench, aye. Motion pass four-zero. Moving on to the second nominee, I need a motion. For some reason, it's not up on everyone's screen.
Uh, it's, I don't touch this thing, so.
I motion for Gabriel Stein from uh Victor Elementary School District.
Benz, I sec- second.
Ms. LeVey, can you call for the vote, please?
Trustee Webster? Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, aye. Motion pass four-zero. Third nominee?
I mo- motion, um uh Tom Court Courtney for the third nom- nom- nominee.
I second. Um, Madam President, wait, I don't see it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I I said that wrong. Tom, yeah, Tom.
I know. Go to page two, please, Anthony.
Courtney from Lucerne.
Right there.
Oh, okay.
Those are your nominees.
Oh, wow. Okay, sorry.
It's okay.
She's really confused though.
Uh, Maria, Maria Gomez, then.
She's from. I second. Ms. LeVey, can you call for the vote, please?
Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, aye. Motion pass four-zero. Fourth nomin- nominee?
Well, if we're gonna do all six, it's gonna be all the names up here.
Correct, but you don't need to. So it's up to the board, and if you just want to vote for those three, you can.
We could write in a candidate, right? It says we could write in a candidate.
Yes.
Okay, I would like to motion Barbara Dew from Victor Union High School District.
I second.
I'll take the vote. Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Uh Benz, aye.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, aye. Motion pass four-zero. Are we nominating a fifth?
Now I guess.
Can we go back to that list? Could you post the list back there?
The remaining people are Kathy Thompson.
From the original, that long list that.
Go down.
Yeah, yeah, that one. There was someone else.
Does anyone else? Ms. Turner says that's it for her to let another trustee like to.
I am, I'm fine.
Okay, Webster?
I'm gonna have a camper.
I'm sorry.
I'm happy. I'm good.
Z work done.
Perfect. We can move on to fourteen point oh-three.
Fourteen point zero-three. Trustees, I need a motion to approve the updated assistant superintendent business service services uh job description.
Webster, I move to approve.
Can I get a second, please?
Turner, I second.
Ms. LeVey, call for the vote, please.
Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee LaFrench?
Trustee LaFrench, motion passes for zero. Fourteen point zero-four. Uh, trustees, I need a motion to approve the agreement with C A C C for the uh cadet corps program.
Turner, I motion to approve the agreement.
Benz, I sec- second.
Any discussion?
Um, I just want to extend my excitement to our lieutenant, and I look forward to you being in our district.
Benz?
Welcome. What are, and my comment, questions? I have none. Just, I'm glad we're gonna get this ball rolling.
Trustee Turner?
I have no comments, but I'm happy that we are proving this tonight. Thank you.
Ms. LeVey, call for the vote. Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee LaFrench?
I, motion pass four-zero. Fourteen point zero-five. Trustees, I need a motion to approve the tentative agreement between the Adelanto Elementary School District and the Adelanto District Teachers Association on the twenty twenty-four slash twenty-five school calendar.
Benz, I mo- mo- motion to to approve the agreeing agreement, the tentative agreeing green agreement for the school cal- calendar of the twen- twenty-two, one, twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Turner, I second.
Open for discussion. Benz, do you have anything?
No, I'm just got that.
Okay, something. Ms. Turner?
No discussion.
Ms. Webster?
I'm good.
Ms. LeVey, can you call for the vote, please?
Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee LaFrench?
Trustee LaFrench, I, motion pass four-zero. Fifteen policy introductions, updates, and readings. Fifteen oh-one. Trustees, I need a motion to adopt and approve the first reading of policy six-one-six-four point six and administrative regulations six-one-six-four point six, identification and education under section five zero-four. I need a motion.
Webster, I motion.
I need a second, please.
Benz, I sec- sec- second.
Any discussion, Benz?
I have none.
Ms. Turner?
None.
Ms. Webster?
I'm good, thank you.
I'll take the vote. Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, aye. Fifteen point zero-two. Trustees, I need a motion to adopt and approve the first reading administrative regulations four-one-one-nine point one-two four-two-one-nine point one-two four-three-one-nine point twelve and exhibit four-one-one-nine point twelve four-two-one-nine point twelve four-three-one-nine point twelve. Title nine, sexual harassment complaint procedure. I need a motion.
Benz, I mo- 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 motion to to approve I, item fif- fifteen point oh-two.
Webster, I second to approve item fifteen point oh-two.
Any discussion? Ms. LeVey, please calls for the vote.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, I. Motion pass four-one. Fifteen point zero-three. Trustees, I need a motion to adopt and approve the first read of Adelanto Elementary School District Board Policy five-one-four-one point five-two, suicide prevention. I need a motion, please.
Turner, I motion to approve.
Benz, I sec- second?
Any discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. LeVey, please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster?
Webster, aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, I. Motion pass four-zero. Fifteen zero four. Trustees, I need a motion to adopt and approve the first reading of Adelanto Elementary School District Policy five-one-four-five point three and administrative regulations five-one-four-five point three, non-discrimination harassment. I need a motion, please.
Benz, I mos- motion to to approve I, item fif- fifteen point zero-four.
I need a second?
Webster, I second.
Any discussion?
I actually do have one little con- comment, and it's just I'm glad that we are up- updated dating pol- policy at all the con- conferences I've been been bitten to. They they always say that, you know, board pol- policy is a live, living doc- document and that it's always changed, changing, and that it cannot not be stag- stagnant. So I'm glad that we are take, take, taking these these steps to update, date them. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Trustee Turner?
No comment.
Trustee Webster?
No comment.
Ms. LeVey, call for the vote, please.
Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee Benz?
Benz, aye.
Trustee LaFrench?
LaFrench, I. Motion pass four-zero. Moving on to sixteen, governing board members' reports and announcements. Trustee Benz, I'll start with you.
I'm gonna keep mine short because we're on a time thing. I could not a- attend the Black History Month, so celebrations, because as I teach as well, I, you know, have to be in my cla- classroom with my kids, so it's real, really hard for me to miss because just like stu- student uh attend- attendance is in important, so is teach- teacher attend- tendence. But I'm glad that, you know, tr- trustee turn Turner shares the things that she she's seen, and I appre- appreciated the picture pictures, and I'm I'm glad that she could could go, so. And that's all I have.
Trustee Webster?
Man, I'm going on spot next. Okay. Tonight, I want to take a moment and go back to March of twenty twenty. Our entire known routine was tossed upside down. What we knew as life was stopped. Our shelves at stores were empty and our loved ones were distanced for safety. Our schools shut and our society was tested. During the pandemic, people lost loved ones. We lost them to COVID, depression and other means. Some were unable to be with their loved ones during struggled times. Some said goodbye before goodbye was a thought. Another thing that rose from COVID was domestic violence, strained households, frustration, evictions, broken homes, and so much more. Many peace, people face tragedy. Many people are still traumatized. We all were forced to essentially face life's biggest hurdles, especially our children, many of which, due to circumstances, were made to grow up fast. Our kids today have seen a lot of life. Trauma triggers emotional responses and physical responses. Last year, we had fourth graders, students who had little concept of what middle school would be like plunged into a whole new world. We saw first graders who had never been to school, and we have eighth graders this year having their first normal year in middle school. Here we are in our first normal school year since the beginning of all this, first year where we don't have regulations. We don't have restrictions. We can have family engagement where families can join us in our schools. This year, we have seen fall celebrations, winter activities, numerous creative ideas. We have had a change in administration, seen growth in teamwork and headway. In the time Mr. Kraus was interim. But to create equity, it takes all of us to come together to work on ourselves and each other. When I was at Every Child Counts, we listened to a gentleman named Houston Kraft, where he spoke about deep kindness, not the kind and kindness where we talk, tell each other how much we like each other's shoes, but the kindness where we take the time to ask each other, are you okay? Are you eating and are you taking care of yourself? What has you up at night? The questions that remind people you care and that we're thankful that we're all here. I strongly believe we need more of this. I have heard the frustrations in our staff. I hear that our children have issues. I hear they are behind schedule. And no accountability will be claimed. But what we can do today is take responsibility. Our children need all of our staff, all of our staff. Bus drivers, teachers, office staff, janitors, I T, and many more. And as many have stated their wishes, I just can't go laying off everyone else to accommodate certain demands. What I am willing to do is to regroup, find acceptable measures where every key essential individual can be incentivized and compensated fairly to help support today's kids with today's monies. All the while maintaining fiscal health for the long term of our staff and students. The word trustee means we are trusted to make the best decisions that will benefit our entire district. These problems are not unknown to us. As we step forth with a new administration just the end of last month, our ADA is down, and our children are struggling to get to school, which we continue to work on, thanks to Mr. Kraus. Teacher absence is a crisis. We have ninety-four teachers out last Friday and seventy-two teachers out today. What drives our students? This school year alone, we have spent one point four million dollars of taxpayer funds for substitute teachers since August of this year, this school year. I wonder how many teachers we could have hired. The only way this works is if every individual is committed to the educational experience. And the only way we grow our district, our staff, and our students is if we all commit to it. Commit to being part of the district, of the solutions that move today's students from behind to excelling. Commit to those having, commit to having those conversations with our administration, site, and district levels. Commit to communicating with each other. No one said that this would be easy, but no one said that we had to do it alone. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Turner.
I would like to thank you, um, my fellow trustees, uh, for your comments, um. Trustee Webster, you echoed my sentiments exactly. Um, you know, being a board member is tough, as well as teachers and administrators and everyone else and students, because we're here for the students. And, um, when our students come to school, they need teachers in the classroom. When they get on the bus stop, when they stand at that bus stop, they need buses to pick them up. I was a working parent too, when my sons went to school. And if the bus didn't pick them up, my husband and I would be in a world of trouble because our kids would be on that bus stop when both my husband and myself was thirty-five miles away from home with no one to pick them up. So for bus drivers, this is what we do. We get our kids to school, and when our children stand in line, they wanna, they need a teacher there to greet them. And I know we hearing about money, but I know that you, you didn't do this job just for money. Money is important, but to have the number of teachers that we have out on a regular basis, that's just unheard of for our students. And our students get frustrated when their teacher is not there to greet them and give them the education that they so much deserve. Education is a civil right, not just a luxury. We're here not just to talk about what's good in our districts. We're here to bring up our next generation of people who will make decisions for us. And if they're not educated, then can you just imagine what type of decisions they will make for us? And that's a scary thought. Um, I hear that we compare, um, ourselves and our, and our salaries to other districts and how teachers are running away. We, we, just not at the last board meeting, but at the regular board meeting, we celebrated years of longevity in this district. Thirty years, twenty-five years, twenty years. That's unheard of in a lot of districts. You know, yes, we could do some things better, but we have to work together in doing that to make it better. And for slamming each other and calling us names and making up stories and flat out lying about the condition of this district. You know, it, it's very disheartening, and I know people out there, if you're still on Zoom, and if you're not, you're gonna hear it tomorrow when you pull it off YouTube. I know your head's gonna be a little sideways, because mine is sideways too. Because when I hear that students are not being picked up and buses telling parents, say, oh, we're not gonna bring your kid to school? Or, or we go, teachers are not showing up, and then you have to split classes with other teachers? For the teachers that are showing up every day and giving our students what they need? It's, it's just disheartening. But to ask for eighteen percent raise? Who, who could do that? I've looked at the numbers. No one is given an eighteen percent raise. No one. And if we compare the math, an eighteen percent raise on step one, column one will equate to sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars. That's a lot. Yeah, we, we could do it. I mean, but where would we be? We would really be under state receivership if we did that. We just don't have money sitting there, uh, to just give raises. We have other things that we need to do. I heard that we need aides in the classroom. We need curriculum. We need, we need different things for our students. And looking at where our teachers are. Yes, and you've heard me say many, many, many times before that teachers are important. I'm not just saying that. No, I'm, we're all teachers. I'm a teacher, because I taught my children before they went to school. And I, I've taught not just my children, but other people's children that I allowed to stay in my home, so they can get a good education. My nephew was pushed and pushed and pushed. He was being pushed in eleventh grade. He had eight Fs, but they kept pushing him up and up and up. He wasn't gonna graduate. No way was he gonna get the opportunity to graduate. So I brought him into my home, and he graduated from high school and graduated from college last year. So we're educators, you know, and I'm sorry, you deserve money, you deserve it's, it's to be paid. I wish we could give you eighteen percent. But the state is not giving us that money. Where is it gonna come from? You know, and it's been tough, and trustee Webster, you know, from March of twenty twenty, a lot of things, a lot of firsts has happened in this district. Some good things and not so good things. We've lost two trustees. I've been sitting here for a while, and that's the first time that we've lost two trustees. Suddenly. And trustee Ecker's sons are here. You know, I don't know what to say to you to ease your pain. You know, we've sat with Holly for a number of years, and I just got a note that I need to stop talking, but I just wanna say that we're here for you. And anything that we could do for you, we're here. We just don't sit here and say lip service and and, and not to, to say that we don't care, because we do care. This job right here that we, we're getting paid, we get two hundred and forty-something dollars a month. That's what we get paid. That's what we get paid. Two hundred and forty-some, not an hour, a month. That's what we get paid. So we're not doing it for the pay, staying up this late. I just want you to know that we're here and we're committed to making decisions for our children, our staff, and our students, and that's our main concern here. And, you know, you can call me, you could text me, and I'm here and I'm willing to listen. But we have to work together, and together we could do greatness. Separated and, and, and saying untruths, that's not gonna get us anywhere. This man here, our new superintendent and our new cabinet, we're working as hard as we can to move this district in the right direction, and I know we could do it with you. We need you. We need all of us to work together. I, I T department, they're here with us, our security department, our administration, our cabinet. Everyone, our C N S, they cook our kids our food every day. Sometimes that's the only meal that they will get every day, is the food that they get here. Sometime the encouragement that they get is from a teacher. And I know your jobs are hard. It is. But I know we could do it together, and we need to do it together and work together. So that's it. I just got cut off.
Thank you, trustee Turner. Thank you very much. Okay, we have about two minutes left. I'll try to talk as fast as I can with my one minute. Okay, so, um, first thing I wanna say is that I'll just read from my paper, because that's about as fast as I can go. I thank you guys. I thank you, Brad and Eric, for coming. I know that you know that right now, you know, that she knows that you're here, and of course, you're representing her. I appreciate you, and I thank you for coming. I do. I have four pages of notes and questions from tonight. I'll be following up in the morning. I appreciate the questions that we got tonight. When it comes to TK, I wanna say that TK does not look like kindergarten. And for TK classrooms to not look like TK classrooms, if I have to go on my lunch break, everyone knows I work down to here, I'll go on my lunch break in order to be able to look at every TK classroom. A TK classroom is not kindergarten. I wanna emphasize that. They should have housekeeping areas, they should have block areas, they should have library areas, they should have writing centers. It is not kindergarten. It is transitional. They are four years old. So I do have a concern with that. The next thing is that, um, I forgot my train of thought. Okay, I'm gonna go on and end it, cuz I wanna make sure that I end on time. Trustees, I need a motion to adjourn.
Benz, I mo- motion to adjourn.
Turn around a second.
Ms. LeVey, can you call for the vote, please?
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I. The time is now eleven o'clock.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, and drive home safe.
Yes.
Thank you, you're, you guys on Zoom. Thank you for, um, hanging in there with us till eleven. Thank you.